Hello, everyone. Welcome to the July meeting of the Town of Lloyd's zoning board of appeals. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. There is no smoking. The exits are at the back of the room on either side. Please turn your cell phones to vibrate. All right, public hearing. Ludwig, Lisa, and David, area variance twenty-five, Dirks Terrace, SBL eighty-seven point ten dash three dash five. Applicant is seeking an area variance of point zero four acres relief for minimum acreage required for an accessory apartment in an R one-half zone. How are you doing tonight? Oh, not bad.
Last, yes, last summer we were here, we just, you stated that we needed to get a handwritten draft of it. So we have that if you
Okay. Oh, we can share. Um. Right. So just, just refresh our memories. Give us a rundown. I mean, remember it was went through, didn't have a kitchen, then it did have a kitchen and just kind of refresh the board's memory of
Right. When we did the the blueprint, I don't know why they didn't put it on there, but it always had, it was going to have a kitchen up there. And for some reason it fell through the cracks and then all of a sudden we're done. And then someone's like, oh, where does it's not on the plan? And then we're looking at the plan and we're like, it's not on the plan. So I don't know what happened, who overlooked it. So that's, that's what happened.
Okay, yeah. It was pretty straightforward. Does the board have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant? Before we open a public hearing?
Anybody from the public?
All right. Like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Both? Okay. If you guys need to step back, we'll ask. Right, you guys don't have any, anything else for the applicant, anything they need for the next meeting that we can think of? So step back, we'll open the public hearing, see if anybody has any comments, question, concerns, and we'll bring you back up. Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to be heard? On this application, I'm sure a lot of people wish to be heard on the next one, but for this one, does anyone wish to be heard? Okay. Thank you. As we always do, we're going to leave the public hearing open. I'd like to do a, if you can walk us through the balancing test, we'll do a straw poll so we can do a draft resolution.
Balancing test is the ultimate decision point for an area of there are a number of variance factors that go into that balancing and they're ultimately going to decide whether
Thank you very much, Sarah. You're ultimately going to decide whether the balance of the equities favors the grant to the granting of the variance. Because that would be a benefit to the applicant versus the impacts to the community if you were to grant that variance. So the first variance factor is whether granting the variance would have a detrimental effect on the community or any of the neighbors. And so I go ahead and
So, um, for this particular variance, it is an extremely small ask. And it was something that kind of fell through the cracks. So I don't believe it would have detrimental effect. Does anyone?
Agreed. No, I know the property and I don't see a problem.
Okay.
So the second variance factor is whether there are any feasible alternatives that would achieve the applicant's goals that would not require a variance.
I don't believe there would be. It's already gone through the process. Again, like I had stated previously, just something that fell through the cracks. And again, the edge. Everyone's clear. Everyone's good.
Is the variance substantive? And even if it is, would the substantive nature of the variance result in any environmental impacts?
It is not. It is point zero four acre relief. So it is not. You agree?
Agreed.
All right. Would the granting of the variance result in any environmental impacts?
It would not.
Is the
Here comes. It's our favorite ones.
Is the difficulty self-created?
They all are. It is self-created, but it does not have a effect.
No, negative.
Everyone on board?
Yeah.
Right.
Paul, if you could prepare a draft resolution for the
For approval of the
Of the applicant.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
So what we're going to do is we'll leave the public hearing open. We'll prepare a draft resolution for approval unless something changes at next meeting. You guys should be good to go. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So we'll be back at the next one.
Yes. Here to see us one more time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care.
All right. Continued public hearing. Appeal. Appealing determination made by the building department director regarding whether a pet crematory is considered a service business. Public comments circulated aboard. Public hearing was opened last month. So before we kick this off, I just want to remind everyone as of the last time, this board is only here to determine whether this is a service business. All right. And with that, Paul, if you could give us an update of status. Just kind of
Sure.
Fresh the board, let the public know what's, what's coming up.
Going on. You know, thought a bit about this because from my perspective, as someone who studied government my entire career and worked in government my entire career. You know, I see this, what's happening in Lloyd from a ten thousand foot view is, is a good example of how government should work. You had at the outset, the building department make is appear on its face a reasonable determination. That's the job of the building department is to make an interpretation of the zoning law based on his experience and expertise. So that happened. The application for site plan approval came to the planning board. And the planning board noticed, gave notice of a public hearing and opened the public hearing and the public came out and spoke against the project and indicated concerns about air emissions, indicated concerns that this was not a service business use. And the planning board heard that. And they said, we're not going to move forward with this public hearing until this question of whether or not this is a service business use is resolved. And so they can, they did what they adjourned the hearing indefinitely until it was resolved and asked the ZBA for clarification on the issue. Comes to the ZBA, three, some additional members of the public also joined in the, the appeal and were allowed to be part of the planning board's request for clarification. And, and you had a, a public hearing last month that I was not part of and, you know, we have a long draft of the minutes from all the people who spoke about their concerns and we have a lot of written comment that's been received. Which I'm sure the board is, you know, considered. Cause I know you guys and you read everything. But be a tough start sometimes by not reading it all as well. But it's your town. And so in the midst of all of this, the town board, which is the board that's responsible, you're responsible for interpreting the law. It's, I mean, it's like, it's like this. The planning board is responsible for applying the law. The ZBA is responsible for interpreting the law. And the town board is responsible for making the law. And the town board goes, I mean, you know, the TV cameras and you've got your local media. A lot of attention. Everybody knows what's going on. Small town. And the town board is concerned about the air emissions issue. And it's, you know, beyond this specific project, but it's a concern and it's been highlighted to them that it really is something that needs to be addressed. So they stepped into the fray and they've proposed a zoning change. And that, that was unanimous board, right? That moved forward with a zoning change, Mike, right? Is my understanding? And, you know, they're taking it up again next, next week on the sixteenth. So, you know, that's the process and, and it's working and it's, you know, the public is being heard. The boards are doing their job. The staff did their job at the outset. It's good government. What it means for this board and your appeal is, and the chair and I talked about this today and he's very clear. You know, until the town board does anything, we're on the straight and narrow, still looking at the question of whether this is a service business use. And so that's the purpose of tonight's continued public hearing. You know, I, I think that there's, you know, a potential that at the next town board meeting, they may take action. Or if and when they do, if they were to adopt the proposed zoning change, which is an actual specific definition of crematory, then the question of whether or not this service, this is a service business use goes away. Because, you know, based on what I've seen from what I've read about the, the definition, this proposed use would clearly be a crematory use that would be subject to the zoning code as such. And so, so basically, you know, you wouldn't need to interpret it anymore. It would have changed what David Barton had thought. You know, just looking at the zoning code was the right approach. But that's the authority that the town board has. And it's an inappropriate exercise of government when they are out there trying to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community.
Right.
So
But as we had said, as of right now, it is still a question in front of this board. So we will absolutely hear the public's comments, concerns this evening. And I'm sure the town board is present and that will be relayed to them as well. So I'm ready to open it up to to the public, if anyone wishes to be heard. And there was a ton of correspondence, which doing your job. I think it's great.
Hi, guys.
Hello again. Say your name again and your
I'm Lacey Maffey. I live at three Tilsen Avenue. This is with all due respect. I do not feel it is appropriate at all to bring up the town board's proposal to change the zoning code at this hearing. It is interfering with our ability to have a, a fair appeal because now they've dipped their hand and they've muddied the waters. I don't believe that this is fair to do to us. I, I don't believe that we should be expected to speak yet again to explain the same things that we've been saying for many, many hearings. And I don't mean this at all rudely because you guys are all doing a wonderful job at listening to us and coming to these meetings. And I'm sure they're very unpleasant to be with such a contentious subject. However, this is being rushed through by the town board and it's not an appropriate solution to this problem. The ZBA should be allowed to make their determination free from an idea that they could say, you know, you could say yes or no, and then don't worry, the town board will take care of it. Because there are a lot of issues with the town board's proposal. And we're really not fixing anything. We're just continuing to drag this on and none of us want that. This is exhausting. Having to do all of this research, having to do all of these conversations. You know, speaking to our neighbors, making sure people know about it. You guys having to sit here and listen to us say that basically, you know, the same important things, but just, this is, this is crazy. You know, I think we've made it a very much of an adequate case for you to not find that this is a service business. I feel like that is very reasonable. It kicks it back to the planning board. We will have our town board hearing. And then at least this part of it, we can make a step forward because this is, this is just dragging on and on. And it's very, very straightforward. I put into my statement originally, is it all right if I go a little bit more?
Absolutely.
Put my statement that I sent to this CBA for this meeting that there is nowhere in the state where they are saying that this is a service business, even if they've defined service. And even if they define crematory, they keep them separate. They're not thinking that they're the same thing. And they're also, you know, saying this in, in planning board minutes. Where those people, you know, it's the, this would be such an anomaly. It seems very easy to just say, you know what, we, we weren't quite you know, versed in what a pet crematory does. You know, we heard a lot of nice things from the applicant and the manufacturer of the crematory product. But, you know, we made a mistake. It really, this is not the normal way that planning planning offices interpret the definition of a service business. And this is, this is not considered a service business, even by, you know, the DEC, as we pointed out last, last meeting, you know. So I just really, I know. I just really ask you guys to just, let's just end this part of it now. Because it's also, it's interfering with our ability to talk to anybody about this. Because now we have the town board. Which meeting are we going to? We're going to this meeting? Now we have to drag everybody out again six days from now? I mean, it's just, it's, it's made it very difficult. And it's an unfair burden to place on us as the townspeople when we've already been having to do a lot of, you know, extra work to try to like, you know, figure out the right thing to do and to protect our community and, you know, participate in our public process as, as, you know, owed to us as residents of the community. But if we are not able to have a clear and fair hearing of our appeal, then, you know, what are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to be heard?
Hi, guys. I'm Sal Kachidi. I live on Bresch Boulevard. I just have basically a short sort of legalistic take on this. It's not very dramatic. The, the town law of New York State, Chapter 62, Article 16 is where the ZBA power comes from. And the 267B says that when you're deciding appeals such as this, you shall, quote, this is a quote, shall have all the powers of the administrative official from whose order, interpretation or determination the appeal is taken. So what I think is, you are, in the sense, the building inspector now. You are the building department. You have taken that over. And if I were in your position and I sat on the planning board, so I kind of know how it feels. If I, I would look for a logical, how does this fit? That's how I would look at it. The first thing I would look at is, is that the circular logic of the service industry definition, it doesn't really help. Does the service industry or service use is, provides a service to the public? So my, my argument here is, rhetorical to that is, if a slaughterhouse wanted to move in, but they sold hamburgers for $5 once a week, would that be a service? Because they're going to sell something to the public. But I think that argument, it reduces to the absurd. I don't, I don't think that an incinerator was contemplated in any of the zoning or comprehensive plans. And I've read all of them. Anyway, enough of that. 100-5 is the purpose of the zoning. And in the very beginning, it just says, it is enacted to promote and protect the public health, right? So if I were you, that's what I would use as my guideline. Because I don't really think there is any other evidence in the zoning that I could put my hat on and say, this says crematory, this says incinerator. None of that is there. I don't think it was ever contemplated. And as you all know, 100-12 says uses that are not listed in the use table are prohibited. Like, for instance, the slaughterhouse. If there was a slaughterhouse next to the elementary school, I would think we could all agree that would be prohibited. Even if they sold hamburger meat for $5 once in a while, right? So that's what I would use. If I were in your position, I hope you look at it that way. And I thank you for hearing my comment.
Thank you.
John Kelly, 5 Great Villain. I just wanted to clarify the comments I made at the last public hearing. I think this can be boiled down pretty simply. This is a request for an interpretation of the zoning laws. Question is, according to the zoning code, are crematoriums allowed in the CB zone? One, if it's a use is not listed, if it's not a listed permitted use in the table, it is prohibited. That's what the law says. And there's a whole list of all the things that are permitted. Crematoriums are not in this list of permitted uses. Crematoriums were considered when this was written and were explicitly unlisted. That in the definition of the funeral home. Therefore, crematoriums are not permitted anywhere in the town of Lloyd. This should be your interpretation of the code, pretty straightforward. May I remind you, you as a board have to make an interpretation based on what the code says, not what you think is the right thing to do. The town board's proposal for a change in the zoning code is the place to have that discussion.
Thank you.
Kathy Rod Jacobson, 146 New Pulse Road. Tonight isn't, is about more than just a single project. And the fact that we are not making a decision on this because of something that the town board may or may not do is concerning. This is about protecting our children, respecting our community's voice and ensuring that development in the town of Lloyd aligns with our comp plan and the principles of smart growth. The town's comprehensive plan, which we spent a whole lot of money on developing, is clear. We should be fostering smart, sustainable growth that sustains our sense of place, supports the natural environment and an ecotourism economy, and respects the wishes of residents. This project does none of those things. Placing a crematorium next to an elementary school. I mean, just when you say that sentence out loud, anybody that I talk to from in town, anywhere else is like, wait, what? And just to be clear, this, this is not anti-business. This is about having the right kind of development in the right places and following the planning principles we already agreed to as a community while protecting public health. This project does not create jobs. It does not create significant economic activity. It is a ploy to make money on the back of Highlanders at the expense of our kids' safety and our town's long-term vision. That is something that this board should be comfortable saying. The bottom line is, the town board is going to do what the town board is going to do. And hopefully it's the right decision. My understanding is that this, putting this on the use table is going to put human crematoriums within the area of light industrial on the table as well, which is an entirely different set of issues. But your task is very clear in that it's the definition of a service business. I know how many friends and neighbors have personally contacted this board, have contacted the town board. And the fact that we're not making a decision today feels like passing the buck. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just have a document here. My name is Megan Quinn. I live at 10 Woodside Place. I would just like to say, sorry, I'm just pulling this up. I just have a timeline of what happened. It was interesting that Attorney Van Cott talked about this being an example of how government works as a positive way. And I just, it just boggles the mind to, to think that. Because to me, this is just at a fundamental and example of dysfunction. First of all, the fact that people thought it was okay to put this next to an elementary school. Secondly, the town didn't follow the correct process. So, you know, the first time there was a public hearing on this, none of us even knew about it because there wasn't appropriate contact with the school board and the neighbors. So I don't understand how it's supposed to be, if this is considered to be like the proper process, we're not finding out about things in the appropriate time. So, for example, the first meeting was, the first public hearing for this was set on February 27th. And then there was a public hearing on March 27th. And none of us were here. No, no parents were here, just Mr. Epperson had found out about it. But I don't understand how it's good governance to not involve the constituents, as in the parents and the neighbors. It's incredibly disappointing that you're not making a decision because I was hoping you would make the right decision. I think it's okay to admit when you're wrong. It's clearly not a service business. I don't know why you can't just admit that. And also it opens us up to standalone human crematoriums in our town. Is that really what we want in our town? So by passing the buck, now we could have standalone home, human crematoriums that are cremating all day and pet crematoriums that are cremating all day. And we're just doing that to not say that we were wrong. And I'm just, I'm just really disappointed because I've put a lot of work into this and I feel like there's a bajillion reasons why this is not a service business and why can't you just say it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
My name is Will Gunther. I live at 17 A Drive. I spoke last time. I have serious health concerns related to PM 2.5 and heavy metal emissions. I understand that that's not what the board is ruling on. It's funny to say this, but I feel like pet crematorium makes it sound much nicer than it is, where it's really a bulk animal waste disposal facility. This is not something where someone's going to like, when my cat dies, I'm not going to walk in with him in my arms. And like, it's not a funeral home. It's, we're talking about thousands of pounds of animal waste being disposed of. And does that animal waste need to go somewhere? Sure, but it is clearly inappropriate to be next to a school. Even if it were to be a service business, would we allow that type of pollution from any service business to take place in our community? I also agree with Megan. I'm very frustrated that this hasn't been ruled on today. I mean, that is, I feel like the, the role of this board and it's what we're all expecting. There's a lot of people here. It's been a lot of person hours of work put into this. It's a lot of our time. We have other, more important issues and passions that we would really like to be spending our time on. But unfortunately, this needs to be at the top of our list again. And probably for, you know, an undetermined amount of time at this point. It is really a drain on us and our community to still be thinking about this when the ruling could be finished by now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to be heard? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to be heard? I have another, thank you.
My name is Bruce Epperson. I live at 314 Bellevue Road. Let me confine my comments to the events of the last two weeks. Director Barton issued a determination with a written support memo explaining why he believed that pet crematories fell into the category of service businesses for the purposes of the zoning table and zoning code. The chairman of the planning board, you know, through an electronic mail transmission, requested a determination from this board as to whether that was the correct determination. I and three other co-appellants also filed an appeal with the Department of Building, Planning and Zoning, seeking to appeal that same determination. That's the purpose for which we're here this, this evening and the meeting of last month. Two weeks ago approximately, Mr. Barton's superior, Mr. Plavcek, the town supervisor, proposed an ordinance that would add human and pet crematories to the town's zoning table and would allow it as permitted use with a site plan approval in the light industrial use. As Mr. Van Cott explained, the two are currently being considered in parallel. However, this puts an particular onus on this board. If the board should determine that Mr. Barton was correct through essentially a quasi-judicial determination, that would mean that crematories are permitted within, as a service business, within the GB and the other zoning districts which allow service businesses. If, in addition, the town board approves the zoning code, human and pet crematories would be allowed in the zoning table in light industrial uses. But that same zoning table would prohibit pet and human crematories in the light industrial zones, which would create an inherent conflict of, inherent conflict of laws with our own zoning code, which is correct. The interpretation by this board that they're service businesses and allowed in any zoning code in which a service business is allowed, or in the town board in which they're not allowed in zoning districts through a service business, but are allowed through the zoning table in light industrial districts. Therefore, unlike Mr. Van Cott, I conclude that it's actually a prerequisite for this board to conclude that they're, that pet crematories are not a service business. This would then, in a legislative sense, free up the town board to include them within the light industrial zones. And I myself have no opinion one way or the other as to whether they should in fact be included in the light industrial zoning district. But I caution you to have two different sets of laws coming at the same zone, at the same general use, one a pet crematory and the other human pet crematories, from two different sources of law. Simply encourages disaster. In addition, I have to disagree with Mr. Van Cott. I think the fact that if the town board passes this ordinance, it does not make this determination go away. It's a determination you have to make, one way or the other. As Mr. Van Cott wrote in June 9th, "This letter confirms that the appeals by yourself, Ms. Quinn, both individually and as guardian of KQ and by Ms. Toddenham, will be consolidated with the town of Lloyd planning board's appeal and considered by the ZBA in the hearing to be convened on June 12th, 2025." Under the town code and state statute, there is a deadline by which a ZBA must render a returned opinion on an appeal. If not, we're entitled to go up to Kingston and go into Supreme Court and seek an opinion. And if that deadline passes and if the ZBA and the town decline to issue any opinion on our appeal, we will go to court. So the question becomes, Mr. Van Cott, do you want to throw this into court?
Thank you.
My name is Mike Petty. I live on Bresch Boulevard. We've heard a lot of very passionate and a lot of very valid points why we shouldn't have a pet crematorium in, in the town of Lloyd. But I think the town of Lloyd is already established by not allowing any of our funeral homes to operate crematoriums within the town of Lloyd, that we shouldn't have a crematorium in the town of Lloyd. And I think that's already been established. And the fact that crematoriums are not listed as a business in any zone in the town of Lloyd, that's acceptable. I think the decision's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. It's already been established that crematoriums should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard in the public? Okay, on Zoom? He's. Can you unmute him, sir? Do we know who it is? Is it? Who? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. I joined late. I'm a reporter for Mid Hudson News and I'm curious to know why the decision is being postponed tonight.
We're not answering questions, sir. This is just public comment. Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard, either here or on Zoom? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We will leave the public comment open. Um, and just this board is independent from the town board. Their what they're doing will not have an effect on this board's decision. Just, I thought I would said that earlier. This board is still tasked with, if the crematorium is a service business.
So what we made the determination on what it is?
Ma'am, if you have, if you have a public comment, please come up, state your name.
Tim Lyons, nineteen Dogwood Knolls. At what point can we expect or anticipate a response? You heard from all of us at the last meeting. There were more than a dozen people that testified to give a, a reason of why this didn't fit. We're waiting on a response. We're not here for additional public comments. We can talk all day long on why it doesn't fit. And mind you, not one of those people that spoke at the last meeting were for it. So when are we going to get a response?
Thank you.
Yeah, just to, oh, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Hey, my name is Angela Leru Lindsay. I live on Smith Terrace. Do we have the power to request that you hold an up down vote today? No?
Public comment.
Any chance there's gonna be a, a vote on this today? What, what additional information are you looking for?
Um, we're gonna seek advice of counsel, and we're going to leave the public hearing open.
Do you need more comments from the public to make a decision?
I'm sorry, ma'am, this, we're not answering questions. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. The, there is no conflict of law. Your job is to interpret the law. The town board's job is to make the law. If the town board makes a law that is, it changes the law. If the, this, if crematoriums are or are not a service business use, it becomes irrelevant if the town board adopts a local law that provides an express definition of a crematorium. And if the town board says that a crematorium can only be in the light industrial district, the pet crematorium that is proposed, even that, even though that's not what the zoning is, uh, change is about, it goes away. That project becomes prohibitive.
That's spot zoning. You just said it yourself. I'm sorry. I don't
I said, I, I said very clearly, excuse me, I'm not gonna argue, but I will, let me just know that the reason that, that I understand the town board is taking this action is because of concern about air emissions in the community. And, and we can discuss this afterwards if you'd like, but it has, it's not about this project. It's not an effort to zone out this project. Not. Did you hear not? And, 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 and that's my understanding, and that, and that is the rationale that the town board has advanced. It's a general concern about the public health, safety and welfare. It's about all the things that you all have been commenting on that aren't relevant to the zoning board's determination. You know, because they're just looking at it with blinders and saying, you know, in terms of the definitions of what is a service business use, does it fit there? That's all they're looking at. The town board gets to look at it more broadly in terms of, gee, what, you know, their crematoria, where should they go? Do they have a place in this town? You know, it, and the zoning change that they're proposed says that it would only go into the light industrial areas. So that's them doing their job to try and protect the health, safety and welfare of the community in the way that they are seeing it. You all, I know you, you're tired, but they're the ultimate authority. They make the law. These guys just interpret it.
I love their interpretation right now, Ben.
Right, but, but you know, here's the thing, the public comment, the, what, what they're doing is looking at whether or not this is a service business use. If the town board makes a decision that takes it out of their hands, then this issue in terms of the interpretation goes away. And, and let me just
I just wanted to make one statement because we're at the town board meeting. It was Sean Murphy that was here. I'm sorry. I asked Dave Plavcek directly if the ZBA found that it wasn't a service business, and even also found that then it was also prohibited completely in the town. He said, after I asked him, would you still add crematoria to the zoning code? And he said, yes, the town board believes it should go in the industrial zone in our town. That is not based on public interest. That is not based on anybody saying anything that they want to do. We are here because we, we want to be treated fairly, and I feel like honestly, the town is so concerned about talking to our lawyers because we don't want to be sued by the one applicant that has been before us. No one could name a single other crematorium application that has been in this town in the last 10 years. Because there isn't one. It's only this one applicant. And that is not right, and it would not stand up in court, and we don't want to go to court. This is so silly, because it's like, maybe he's gonna sue you, but we're definitely gonna sue you. This is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, and what the chairman said, and I think it's appropriate, and it's partly on me, is their need advice of counsel. They need our firm to go through all of the written, voluminous written information that's been provided. They wanted to provide another opportunity to, for the public to speak. You do have the town board looking at this as well, so that may have an effect on all of this. So, so point being, you know, you know, as the chair said, they need advice of counsel. We need to, you know, basically present them with the options, what they can do, and why it would, you know, it seemingly would be appropriate and legally defensible. Because when we're having people saying we're gonna sue you, we have to take that seriously. You guys pay for that. You know, you pay for the cost of litigation. So if we can figure out a way to avoid litigation, you know, that's always the better way, I think. That's the way I've been brought up as a lawyer. So, um, so I apologize, John, but I
Okay. Does, does any other member of the public wish to be heard? Is Zoom as well? All right. Thank you, everyone. Hey, guys. Hey, Paul, Mark. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would talk to Sarah about that at some point.
Wait till it pipes down a little bit.
I might serve to be on TV.
Yeah.
No shows in front of yours. Took that time. I did thirty-five years on this board. They gotta leave off any time?
We'll just, we'll give everybody a few seconds to kind of clear out. Members of the public, if you guys, if you guys could, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay for everybody else, but I don't think everybody Okay.
It's funny because they have Christiane. My brother's named Tom. I'm like, wait.
Okay. It's still, it's still Sarah Lane though, right? Elbow Lane. Nine elbow lane. SPL is, is right? Holy cow, give me the SPL. Give me the SPL.
Joe and Belinda Christiane.
All right, so it's
Should be a new, new number because that's a new law. There it is.
We're getting there.
Eighty-six.
So it is, I, I'll rip it right off of there. So, Christiana, Joe and Belinda, area variance, nine elbow lane, SPL eighty point three dash two dash two seven point one one four. Come on. So, we opened the public hearing last time. As you guys know, we asked you guys for some information last time, which you provided to us. I do not believe we requested any other information. Right, I think that was it. We went over the topo. We went over, um, why it needed to be where it was. Everyone was, was comfortable with that.
They were working on see where their last pipe for the septic was so they can move back as far as they could.
Yep, right. And you guys gave us a rendition of the shed, where it would be, and that's as far back it was as it would be. Um, so, we're gonna have the attorney go through his questions again. Um, and what we'll do is we'll add to that, that we would need a plot plan with exact location where the shed was. Can I think you guys were able to move it back a little bit closer to the
Yeah, I think the only thing that you asked for was a picture from the road which we sent.
Right, which, which you did. Okay. But I think the last time we, we pushed it back, we, we determined we pushed it back as far as we could with the reserve. So we'll, we'll need, we'll need just a plan of that. We'll just need a measurement.
What we brought last time was the furthest we could go.
You have it? Okay, all right. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna go through the balancing test?
Benefit to the applicant of granting the variance versus the impact on the community by, by the grant. First question is whether there would be a detriment to the community or the neighbors by the granting of the variance.
Okay. Reptuder criteria. Through the, through the balancing test, whether it's feasible by, let's go through all of those.
Any alternative without the variance?
There is not. As, as gone through with the applicant already, given, given the amenities that already exist and the topo of their property, it is unique that the only feasible location for the shed is where it has been determined.
Okay. Is the variance substantial?
Given, given the location of the property, the location of the shed and the view shed from the road, I do not believe it is substantial. Everyone in agreement?
Okay, uh, any other environmental impacts?
I do not feel there will be any adverse environmental impacts with the shed placement.
Self-created difficulty.
Always is. You guys didn't have to. So it's always self-created, but in this factor, it is not a, it is a, it is not a deciding factor. Paul, I'd like you to draft a resolution approving the variance. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Um, we can, we can do a straw poll. So is anyone, make to speed this up a little bit, is anyone opposed to the variance being approved? Okay, as we always do, we are going to leave the public hearing open. And we will see you guys next month. Nothing happens. Good to go. And not everybody understands this, but it's a process. It, it's, it's a process. Thank you very much.
So just, there's nothing further you need to add?
Nope, you guys gave us everything. We went through it. He's gonna do the draft resolution unless something really crazy happens.
I just have one really quick question. So once, if you guys say potentially approve it next time, do I have to go back to the building department to get the permit, or do you guys grant the permit directly?
No, no, we don't, we don't, we only
Then they put it out, after we vote on it, they put it out to the public again. It goes through a whole process until the issue of building permit, if we all clears.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There, there's a, uh, people can, um, write our issue after the fact.
White Jewel Holdings LLC, area variance, twenty-five Phillips Avenue, SPL eighty-eight point sixty-nine dash one dash twenty-two. I'm seeking an area variance to allow four units on point five-one acre parcel located in an R one quarter zoning district. So move on forward. So I know we had asked for some information the last meeting about occupancy, when it was last occupied, and we need proof when it was occupied last. Were you able to provide any, I, a representative for the building department could not be here. We also asked him for information, which I don't believe we got. But were you able to, to come up with?
I, I talked with Anthony. I, I put it in here, the, the la, final draft of this. He said that it was occupied when the building changed hands in February of two thousand twenty-four. It was occupied.
Just February of, of February of twenty-four?
Yes. How many, uh, he, he didn't, I, actually, I didn't ask. Um, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't know that mattered.
Paul, do you have?
Well, I was just gonna say that the use was acted at that point.
Right, okay. So, I wish Anthony was here. Does anyone have any questions, comments or concerns for the applicant? Or we reopen the public hearing?
What was added to this, I mean, you've seen this for two months already, but what was added was the, um, the, it's not exactly a tax map, but the, the plot map.
The color code.
Yeah, with the, the other non-single family uses. And I, and I updated the, the rendering of the, the final thing. I got a professional.
Okay.
Excuse me?
It says on the back, on one of the pages, it said rents, two bedrooms, three thousand each, seven fifty to nine fifty, it'd be more if bigger or nicer. Four, if bigger or nicer. The thing, my, my whole thing is nice, that's very, very descriptive word. In other words, if it's nicer. It's not gonna be up to spec.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Saying you can't make your rent. You can't make your mortgage payment with the three, want four, but if it was nicer, you're gonna get more rent. So, he's inquiring and that breakdown is not. Actual what you anticipate. Were you asking for relief when we don't really know how much relief you need?
Well.
You're getting at?
The, the rents I provided were, um, because there's some that are like a two-bedroom, but it's on a lake. And it's, you know, amazing, like the, the ones on Philip Avenue, because of the, the trade-off, nicer I make them, the more it costs. And so it's like a moving target, like my desired level of, um, amenities. Is it gonna give me this rent according to the comparables I could see? Um, if I made them nicer, I could charge more, but it'd also cost me more to make them, and so I still wouldn't, I wouldn't be gaining any ground, does that make sense?
I just try and make it clear.
Um, if you could just step back, I wanna open, open the pub, open the, bring to the public. Any member of the public wish to be heard?
Thank you for allowing me to speak, my name is Timothy Darcy, I am. My, speaking on behalf of my mother, who is the adjacent property owner who lives at twenty-five Grove Street. Um, I did speak at the last meeting and I appreciate the opportunity, um, I just have a question that the gentleman's. Said the place was last occupied in February of two thousand twenty-four, is there any proof of that, or were they required to show any proof of that? Um, place has been vacant for quite a while, and the last individual staying there was a squatter, as far as I know. That's really all I have to say. You know, I, again, I don't believe that the, uh, I don't, I don't believe the unit was ever a three-unit apartment in any legal shape. Or form, it was a one-family house that an extended family lived in, and then when the, uh. They had a upstairs-downstairs arrangement, I don't know where the third apartment was ever allowed, there was, I don't ever recall any public notification of that. And now to go to four on a small parcel in a small building just seems very unreasonable, and again. If it was last occupied in February twenty twenty-four, I wish there was some way that they could provide proof of that, because. I honestly don't believe that, living across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does any other member of the public wish to be heard, either here or Zoom? So, we, you can come back up certainly. For me personally, this is a lot, right? I mean, it's. Yeah, you, you're, you're looking at, you're looking at two allowed, you're putting four in. Well, there's, he has given us, he had given us a rendering for, uh, a tentative plot for parking.
Needs six and a half, six cars, something, in that new, well, he's got to move six cars, but that's the whole front yard, but. I feel that it doubled the, uh, um, impact.
Excuse me, are, are we going from two to four, or are we going from three to four?
We're, we're looking at, we're looking at. Everything, the overall, everything, so you're allowed two, you're asking four. Right, in, in pre-existing non-conforming, it, it does play a part in it, but it's still going from two to four. Right?
Okay.
For me personally, it is, it's, it's a significant ask.
I, I have a problem with doubling the density.
And, like, I, I, I do have more, uh, questions for the building department.
Yeah.
So. As far as, as far as information we would need from the applicant. You purchased in December.
Of, of January of this year.
You purchased in January of two thousand twenty-five.
Correct.
So as far as occupancy. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to provide us with that. Right, so, so.
No inspections.
Yeah, he did, he said he was going to provide us with, um, with that information. So, and, and I also have a, a few more. And I think if there's anything we need from the applicant at this time.
No, because that's a, no, not really from him, because we have dimensions that the proposed fourth. Unit, like the, the four units would be, right?
It's not changing the footprint.
Right, so it doesn't, it doesn't trip that threshold.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think we have, uh. I think the guy gave us all the information he needs, but we have to get clarification.
From, from our building department. Building department. Okay, so.
Would suggest Anthony's read on this. You know, and that's maybe on, on what the applicant is providing, exactly.
That was.
And sort of an assessment of impacts from the building department. Um, you know, what are the impacts? You know, you, you have parking that you're looking at. Really, what else in terms of, how ma- how many bedroom apartments are they?
Currently, currently?
Yeah, I mean, are they, would the, these all be one, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit behind the.
Oh, they would all be two-bedroom, of, before two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
Before. I started taking things apart, there was a, a two, a two and a one.
Yeah. So that could tell you the append, the potential for number of cars, uh, is public water sewer?
Public water and sewer, yeah, that's already there, and electric is already there.
And, and I believe you gave us a layout of what was existing, how, how it was configured. Um, I know Anthony said there was an abandoned section of the house that there was nothing in.
Right, there's, when you went in to the right, it was, there was nothing there. Not livable space, yeah, and there's places where there was a common washer dryer setup. That would be, that would be taken to, for livable space for this added unit.
I, I'm not comfortable doing, uh, a straw poll without having the information from. The building department.
Yeah. I agree with that.
Yeah, absolutely, I wanna know about the, uh, we had the previous.
Fire inspection and.
Right, and, and so we know that it was, um. Two minutes was allowed, and then for the, the third unit, that has just been outside of the, uh. The code, but it's old.
Right, and it's, and well, it, it goes to a timeline.
But the third unit was permitted. Uh, according to.
Actually permitted, or was it, is it just the way?
It was, it was, uh, uh, from, from. Previous information provided, it was pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
But, wha- what happens is, you, you hit a threshold, um. You have to maintain certain criteria to be, to remain pre-existing non-conforming. Um, if you increase the footprint, if you do major construction, uh, if it, if it. Does not have that use for more than a year, uh, a year, or is it?
Forget it offhand.
First criteria, I wanna make sure that we're meeting all of that. And I, like Paul said, I wanna know what the building department. Has for impact.
Right.
Because it, with the information, and I'm not saying this is a termination at all, but with the information right now, I, I personally think it's a, it's a pretty big ask. It's, uh. But again.
Because we're going from looking at the two to four.
Well, you're, you're looking at, you're looking at putting. It's an R, it's an R one-quarter zone, right, so that's, that's a.
One.
One, that's a, a, a single family on a quarter acre, and that's what. That's what the town wants in that area, a single on a quarter acre, so what we're doing is we're going four. On, was it half acre, is a point five-one. Which, which is, it's a big ask, I mean, it truly is.
And it sounds like you, you may be okay with the three you got, potentially.
Right, I mean, look.
But, but.
Going, going from one to two is, is allowable, because you're, you meet your density, right?
Right.
So you're already, you're already outside of what is expected, let's say.
Right.
Then when you go to two to three. That's considerable, right? I mean, that's, that's considerable, now you're going from. Three to four, or one to four. It, it's, it's a big ask, it's.
I guess I don't understand when you say one to four.
So, in the grand scheme of things. It's, it's, it's one lot, it's a, it's an R one-quarter, so you're allowed to build a house on a quarter acre. Or, or a dwelling on a quarter acre, right? So that's, that's what the town envisioned for that area. One dwelling, quarter acre, so because you have a half an acre, your density, you can go to two, like you could go up to two. So now, you're at two in a quarter acre zone, and you went to three, now you wanna go to four. For me, that's, that's a lot, that's significant.
I can't see where you would make, well, I don't see, I don't see in the future.
And, and.
The density would be too drastic to get.
And I can. I completely understand and I sympathize with your investment and your internal investment.
And ultimately, though, it'll come down to, um, the, uh. I, i- i- if the variance is not granted, what would be the impact on the applicant versus?
If it is granted, what is the impact on the neighborhood?
And the neighbor, yeah, absolutely.
So that, that's.
So those.
Right.
This is one where that balancing really may kick in more.
Certainly, certainly.
You know.
And, and like.
Struggling with it.
Like I stated previously, I'm not comfortable evaluating that without all the information from.
Understood.
The building department.
And we can provide, if you'd like, some analysis as well. If that would be helpful.
It, it would, but you would need, you would need the same information, right, you need the same thing that we need.
Yep, yep.
So, am, am I right in, like, you're, you're asking, will this change the neighborhood? Or, or my, it's not exactly changed.
What, what we have to weigh is, does the benefit to you outweigh? What the detriment is to the community or the neighborhood? So. The, the benefit to you is a financial return. The detriment to the neighborhood are four units where the town says there should be one.
Two, or two.
Or, or two, because it's, because it's a bigger. A bigger, um.
Piece.
Does anyone have anything that they feel that they would like the applicant, not the building department, the applicant to provide? That he has not previously provided?
I, I have no, no, I have no problem with the applicant, but it's. I think he gives us a lot of information, but we just got to our homework, we don't have enough information to give it.
Okay, and as we always do, we're gonna leave the public hearing open. Um, we will. We will get the information from the building department. Prior to our next meeting, we'll have that information so we can review it, so at the next meeting. We'll be able to do a draft resolution, unless other, unless there are other public comment that would. Add to it, but I, I believe, judging by how many people were here before, how many people had now, I don't anticipate there being any more. Public comment. But that's, that's the status of, of, of right now.
So there'll, there'll probably be a vote next time.
I, I would say we would do a draft resolution next time, which we, which we tend to do.
Okay.
Just breezing through this, the one thing, I don't, I don't know if y'all have, uh, how much you've talked about it, but the. The vehicles, because if you're talking about adversely affecting the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Or the detriment to the, uh, neighbors, you know, it seems to me like if you have four apartments. You have the potential for eight cars. You know. I mean, I, and I don't know if that's something you've thought about, but, um.
It, it's.
How, how would that?
It's something we think about.
Yeah, no, I know, but.
There, there, there's space, right now, there's space for six.
Okay.
And, and again, that comes down, and, and that's, that's a, that's a, that's a very good example, that comes down to. The benefit to the applicant and the detriment to the neighborhood. So, i- if, if the town's vision is to have one on a quarter acre, which would typically be two cars. So if you live across the street, you're looking at two cars. Because you have a bigger lot, you have two, it's four cars.
Right.
Now you're looking at eight.
And, and are they visible? Is the area where they're parked visible, or are they gonna be?
Well, yeah, he, he had given us, um, a rendition, I believe, the driveway, I don't know if we have it, if we can get it up there. The driveway.
On page six of that document.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So. It would be reasonable for a neighbor to expect to see two. If it was one-quarter, four if it's, if it's a half. But it wouldn't really be reasonable for that, and you have a potential for eight. Because you have four two-bedroom. So. Again, not having all the information. I, I think it's a big ask, I, I think it's, I think it's a big ask. Alright, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing over, I mean, open. Minutes to approve for June twelfth. Lot of pages. Um, I didn't see any discrepancies, uh, I did not get a chance to review the video, which I sometimes do. Um, but to my recollection, I don't see any discrepancies. Um, from the meeting to how it was recorded. I, opposed? Instinct? Thank you, like to entertain a motion. To adjourn. Oh, hold on, hold, hold, I wanna bring that back, I wanna bring, because I completely forgot about something, I would like to entertain a motion to go into. Executive session for advice of counsel.
Okay, can I just, um, clarify that?
Did I maybe do it wrong?
Yeah, no, the, the, the only thing you need to do, um, you guys can go ahead and adjourn, uh, there's no.
We can adjourn first and then, and then go into.
And then do advice of counsel, it's not an executive session, um, it's outside the mo- open meetings law.
Okay, so, I'll go back to my original, right, the first time, like to entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a second. We're fighting the, we're fighting to do it. So I have a second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Alright, thank you.